Call the mean order for the November 28, 2017 study session. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Thank you. Any questions on the consent calendar? Yes, Councilman O'Neil.
Just, and I'm gonna make Mr. Moser very happy by asking a question about the consent calendar tonight. Specifically, item number three, I just had a couple clarification questions for probably, this would be our city attorney, Aaron. Aaron, on number three, when we're talking about the Newport Banning Ranch, would you mind just running through, just real quickly, why this is back up on our, on our, on our agenda?
Yeah, no problem at all. So, the litigation originally went through the trial court, Court of Appeals, and eventually ended up with the California Supreme Court. And the California Supreme Court ended up holding that the analysis that was done on SEQA could have been done a little bit better. So what they did is they directed the Court of Appeals, which eventually directed the trial court, to have the city rescind all the approvals related to the project, and until we basically redid the analysis related to SEQA.
Okay, so, I just want to make sure I understand it correctly. The, it had gone up to the California Supreme Court, California Supreme Court directed Court of Appeal to do a particular act, Court of Appeal then directs the trial court to do a particular act. And then if I understood it correctly, the plaintiff in the case had then submitted around to all the other attorneys in the case, a proposed judgment, and that proposed judgment included the language that all of these needed to be rescinded, and at that point, submitted to the trial judge, trial judge signs it, it's the judgment of the court, and there's a, there's an additional order to the city of Newport Beach, including, it's specifically the city council, to act on rescinding all of these approvals, correct?
That's absolutely right. So what gets issued is a, basically a writ of mandate by, from the trial court directing the city council to take a certain action, and that action is to set aside and vacate all of the approvals relating to the project, and to take no further step toward approving or otherwise implementing the project until an EIR is prepared that's in accordance with what the California Supreme Court directed. And then the city council, after you take the action, within 60 days, we basically go back to the trial court and say that we've done it. So this is, this is compelled by the trial court.
Okay, and failure to do so would result in contempt of someone.
Yes.
Probably.
Probably fine, hopefully not putting me in jail.
Okay, alright.
City Attorney, that's okay.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to see clarification on that.
Thank you, Councilman Herman?
Yeah, I just have a question about item number 10 on, on the consent calendar. Dave, I asked you about this yesterday, were you able to find out if this includes the bay crossing from Castaways over to the proposed Newport Landing development?
I think it's eight.
Number eight?
We did, I'll let Dave answer it directly, I, yeah, we did find out, this is number eight, sorry.
Yes, Councilman, this does not include analysis of the bay crossing up by the Pacific Coast Highway Bridge.
Okay, thank you. And then item number 14, with the retirement of three landscape maintenance people, we'll be down to zero, and we'll be completely outsourcing our, our lands, park maintenance landscaping services, is that correct?
Generally, yes, except for the contract oversight. We do have staff that, that remains making sure that, to make sure that the Mariposa and other contractors are doing what they're supposed to do.
Okay, and yesterday, when I met with you, Dave, and this is just for clarification, for other, newer council members, this is part of a attrition program that has just about come to its end, for the purpose of eventually being able to outsource these services altogether, is that correct?
That's how I'd characterize it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman O'Neil?
Yeah, one, one other clarification on number 10, and this is probably also to Dave Kiff, this is the animal shelter agreement with Font, with Friends of Newport Beach Animal Shelter. First off, I thought this was actually a really solid contract. One of the things I noticed in there was that if Friends of Newport Beach Animal Shelter want to seek funds after, after signing this, they've got to seek approval from the city under, and comply with council policy D-5. And then, the question I had was 3.5 of the agreement says, "The agreement shall be administered by the Newport Beach Police Department. City's Traffic Division Lieutenant or designee shall be the contract administrator." And if I recall correctly, that, that term, contract administrator, requires it be, that's the person that the Friends of Newport Beach Animal Shelter would have to go to, to seek approval for fundraising. So, I'm kinda curious, why are we choosing the, the city's traffic division lieutenant to approve community, electronic communications going out?
That's how it is, sorry, the animal shelter does fall under the traffic division right now, and lieutenant is the boss of the traffic division, so that was our thinking. It could always change, and I guess, I suppose we'd have to make some note and/or amend this, but...
Yeah, I suppose the only, the only clarification I'm seeking on that one is kinda, I get, I, that makes sense, I understand that. I was just kinda, I was wondering if he really, or she, that particular lieutenant would...
Lieutenant Fishbacher, right now.
Okay.
He's been actively involved in this discussion, so...
And he's, he's, he's involved enough on D-5 to know what is and is not appropriate to send out?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Good question, thank you. Councilman Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor, I also have just a small point on the animal shelter. In the contact, contract agreement, it's the words bitter, in terms of the overhead, percent overhead of their total expenses should be in compliance with best practices as determined by the Better Business Bureau. I would like to change that to the Charity Navigator, which is a nationally recognized organization that rates and qualifies the quality of 501(c)(3) organizations. So you could look into that, but I don't think the Better Business Bureau is a good source, that's basically my point, in terms of authority on best practices for charities. And then, on 11, I was going to pull it, but just to clarify, maybe just to emphasis, make greater emphasis on the police patrol, is it police, or the, or the EMT vehicles? One is that you're accelerating the pay, the purchase, so that we can get a better agreement price, purchase price, because we're doing two instead of one?
That's the fire.
That's the fire, EMT vehicles.
Correct.
Yeah, so that's the point, that we are exceeding the budget slightly, but we'll recover that, because it's planned as part of the vehicle replacement fund?
Yes, more than likely that ambulance would be on the fiscal year 18, 19.
Yeah.
Budget, anyway, we moved it up seven months.
Well, that's good, that's smart planning, so I appreciate that. Alright, thanks.
Councilman Avery?
I have a question about number four on the moorings.
Do we have to have members recuse themselves at this time? I'm not asking you, Scott, I'm asking the city attorney.
Yeah, I think to the extent that you're gonna ask questions about it, Councilman Duffield should recuse himself, temporarily, just for a moment. And it's based on his business interest.
Chris, I'm, just have a question about the weights, and the, is this number two on the recommendations, is a different outcome than what we initially, what you initially thought the direction we were headed in terms of adding weights to moorings?
Yes, it is, we met with, or I was at the Newport Moring Association Annual Meeting back in late October, and the message was, they'd prefer not to change any of the, the tables in this chart for weights and chains and line, and so we kept everything the same. However, if a mooring does move as a result of insufficient weight, or if the chain breaks, or, right, insufficient weight, then we would require that weight to be increased by 20%.
So, your experience when, last year, when moorings move, obviously it's happening rather slowly in a high wind situation, has there been any property damage because of moorings moving, or has it just been, they've just sort of moved out of place 10 feet or so, or something?
Occasionally, I'll hear of, of some boats hitting each other. The cause is unknown, whether the line breaks, the chain breaks, the mooring, or the weight moves, but we'd like to think that we catch them before it gets to anything drastic, and it wouldn't move too much.
We have a record of how much weight's on each mooring, is that right?
We do.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions on this item? It's like a game show, any other questions on this part? Okay. Thank you, staff. Next, we have a presentation from Orange County Drowning Task Force, and I believe our own Rob Williams will be participating in this, or giving the presentation, excuse me.
Yes, Councilor, Mayor Muldoon, council members, Rob Williams, your chief lifeguard. Thank you for letting me have this opportunity to talk a little bit about the drowning task force. As you know, the task force, you have donated $5,000 over the last two years in our efforts to hopefully prevent and eliminate drowning, especially in Newport Beach and Orange County. So I just wanted to give you a little overview of what has been happening. The task force was formed just over two years ago, and it was a concept from the city of Irvine and Orange County Fire Authority, because Irvine was one of the leading, leading cities in the county with drowning incidences, so they felt that, that something needed to be done, and all the cities and agencies around also agreed. So you can see that right now, I'm the chair of the task force, and this will go through the end of the year, and a little bit into 18, and then we'll vote on a new chair, but you can see that there's some good names there. The task force is actually housed in the Orange County Health Departments with the county agency, so it's a good place, that we've moved it from Orange County Fire Authority to the healthcare agency, we have a little more power with the county supervisors, and a little more funding as well. But to give you an overview, kind of a little bit on the stats, this is not just United States, California, Newport Beach, Orange County problem, this is a world problem on drowning. And you can see that, it's estimated that 372,000 people die of drowning every year, and the majority of those are in, under lower middle income countries. And you can see that Mozambique in Africa is the number one in drowning rate, death per capita, 19 per 100,000. The USA is 138 out of the 172 reporting countries with just over 1.3 per 100,000. So, we're doing pretty good, but we still have a, a problem in the, the world on drowning. And you can see with the United Nations, I'm not gonna go over all the ways, but these are the United Nations issues and campaigns, and realize that not one of them addresses drowning, or water-related incidences. So, we, everybody agrees that this is a worldwide problem, but not a lot of people are doing a, a lot about it, including the United Nations. In the United States, the CDC reports that over 10 people drown daily, which is about 3,600 a year. Most of the drownings in the United States are children under 14, and especially children under five, and you can see that, for every one child that drowns, another five receive emergency department care for non-fatal emergencies. And non-fatal, the definition of non-fatal is impairment in breathing, impairment from submersion in water, it doesn't have to be ocean, it can be pool, it can be bathtubs, it can be any liquid, and paint buckets, and everything like that. So, and what, Orange County Health Department is classifying a non-fatal drowning is care that's provided by a physician. So, if we send somebody to the hospital that we think needs care, if they just release them, that's not a non-fatal drowning. If there is care provided, then they classify it as a non-fatal drowning in our county. And you can see that, the United States spends about $273 million each year in, in cost of drowning. The, and this might interest our city manager, that the Red Cross in 2014 did a survey of all Americans, and they basically said that over half of our population can't swim professionally. And it's really interesting, it's foreign to us in this, in this environment, especially in an ocean environment, in a aquatic environment, that over half the people in the United States can't swim 100 yards in two minutes, and tread water for two minutes. And if anybody recognizes that's basically our junior lifeguard swim test, is 100 yards swimming with a little bit of treading water. In California, again, drowning is the leading cause of children under five, and last year we had 54 deaths, 34 of them were in pools. In the United States, Alaska ranks first, a lot of that is the fishing industry, and they don't have lifeguards, but California ranks 22nd, and it's just under the national average of 1.0 versus 1.3. And you can see that the California Department of Development Services cares for 755 survivors of non-fatal drowning. And a note that Governor Brown just signed Senate Bill 442 in September, and that is something noteworthy for our community development, is barriers for pools. So if someone builds a new pool, or it does enhancements to a pool, or a home that has a pool, they now have to have two barriers for their pool. Recently, it was just, before that, it was just one, and now it's required to have two barriers for a new pool. And a barrier, there's seven different types of them, don't ask me to quote them all, but it's like a fence, there's alarms on windows, there's alarms on doors, and there's things that are considered barriers by the, by legislation. In Orange County, we're a little bit right on the, the drowning rate of the United States, 1.1 for drowning deaths, and overall, we're at 3.3 for 100, for drowning incidences. The interesting thing that recently, we've seen a trend, and this was a study then from 2011 to 13 for the Orange Care, the healthcare agency, that the seniors are drowning at the highest rate in Orange County. And that's interesting to see that, we always have the trend of the youth, but now the seniors are elevated in their drowning rates as well. And, of course, the children under five are second at 1.9 per 100,000. You can see Newport Beach, this is all drowning incidences for, including non-fatal, and Newport Beach is right on the average for the, the three-year period, 11, 12, and 13, at right about 3.0 per 100,000, and that's all incidences, including non-fatal, which includes our ocean and, and bay waters. For Orange County this year, up to the middle of October, we have had 87 incidents, 36 fatal, as compared to 111 last year. So we're, I think, hopefully on a trend downward. It's really hard to measure if we're improving in our efforts, because we don't know how many people we've actually saved by educating the public, or having water watchers on pools, and the lifeguards on the beaches. We think we were doing a really good job, but it's hard to measure if we've actually saved lives. But our incidences are going down, and you can see the, the incidence for, zero to four is number one, but the death rate for the older people, especially when you get over 50, is, is number one in our county right now. And you can see the breakdown of where people are drowning in Orange County, and this is the non, this is the total incidences, including non-fatal. For Newport Beach, we've had four in 2016 fatal drownings, two of them were in the home, two were in the ocean, and then this year, we've had one. And then the non-fatal, this is the stats for the non-fatal drownings on the breakdown, and you can see mostly the non-fadals, and I will admit, they're from the ocean, and this is where we get into the people that are exhausted, and we rescue, and we send them to the hospital. So you can see that demographic on age group for us changes a little bit when we're talking the ocean, and you're having more users between that 15 to 35-year age, age group, and more males than females last year at least, and then this year, it's about equal. Now, for the Orange County Task Force, we've asked for funding from the municipal agencies and some other agencies around, so this year alone, we've received $130,000 from these agencies, including Newport Beach, and then it's been matched by the county, and this has been efforts by some of our supervisors, and the healthcare agencies in particular. What we've done with this money is mostly have done ad campaigns, a lot of posters, banners, bus ads, I don't know if any of you have seen the bus ads driving around the entire county on OCTA, hopefully you'll look at them now, because there's still some up, they, they were supposed to run through the end of Labor Day, but if they don't have something to replace it, they leave it, so that's where the majority of it. We've done a lot of things on Pandora, digital media, and other avenues in the media. We've done a lot of public service announcements, and I thought I'd throw this one up, I'm not gonna play it, but with the Ducks, they did this one, and it plays on their Jumbotron during games. We also did one with the Angels, three of the supervisors have done it, including Supervisor Doe in Vietnamese, which is the third language, I think, most talked language in, in Orange County. And we've also held media events, and two of those have been in Newport, I know Councilman Dixon attended one at the Ben Carlson statue last, last Memorial Day weekend. The bus advertising, and I don't know how they, they get these numbers, but it's pretty impressive to see that they think that 58 million people have seen these advertisements, and they were in all different languages, so, and you can see the little one on the top picture is in the front, between the headlights, and then they've got ones that are completely wrapped, so it's the extreme. And they're, they're in three different languages, Spanish, Vietnamese, and mostly in English. The digital media on your phones and different advertisements, it's still hitting two to four, 3 million people, and it's geared towards, we have specific advertisements geared for parents and caregivers and adults over 50. And then Pandora, it's those advertisements, when you don't buy the pro account, you actually just listen to the, the advertisements, there's advertisements on Pandora, and you can see that, again, it's geared towards the parents and caregivers and adults over 50. And so our total impressions that people see is 65 million people this year, and of those 65 million, they believe that 25,000 have actually clicked on it and looked further. So that's actually great education for people to, to learn more about drowning. For Newport Beach, this is all about prevention, so I wanted to kinda show, we've had our CAD system for two years, so the last two years, you can see that, for us as lifeguards, we are actively involved in the world of prevention, and over half of our activity that we do is prevention, preventative action, and that's us actually talking and educating the people in our beaches on what the hazards are, and to make them safe. And I thought this was a very interesting stat, and this was year-round per 100 hours worked of every lifeguard, so we're preventing 132, 133, we're talking 133 people on preventative actions per 100 hours worked, so 1.3 for every hour worked is someone talking, that's year-round. In the summertime, that goes, that number goes up to about seven per hour, and you can see how it spikes. As compared to the rescues, it's a little bit lower, obviously, because we're hopefully preventing the rescues before they're happening, and that's where I wanted to stress on the education part of it.
Chief, have a question?
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor. Could you just go back to the previous slide, please? Unless you're gonna do this in a, I don't wanna get ahead of you and steal your future thunder, but talk about prevention, what actually happens when you, when lifeguards are speaking to 232,000 people who are on our beaches, and this is February, this is, was this is last year, 2016?
This is a two-year total.
Okay, so what happened? Just kinda describe the encounter.
It could be a number of things, but basically, the easiest way to describe is, one of our lifeguards will actually go out into the water, or talk to a group that's near the shoreline, and educate them on rip currents, or where to swim best, and it can be one person, it could be five to 10 people at the same time. So they, we're actually talking to people and educating them, it could be a public address from our units, talking to people in the ocean, or our headquarters building with our loudspeakers on the building, advising people to move away from the pier, different things like that. But as we talk to people, we try to educate them, and try to move them to safer places, and give them a little bit of ability to, so next time they come to the ocean, they know, okay, this is a bad area, or I should go to a safer beach. Marina Park has been great, to be able to say, if we have big surf on the oceanfront, hey, walk across the street, and have a little bit of safer area. So that's our guards actually talking to people.
So, how do we know we've prevented it? I mean, how do we classify, how do we determine that classification of prevention?
It's our, we classify that as prevention because we're actually talking to individuals, so it's our interpretation, and we, we believe we've mitigated a problem before it's happened.
Alright, thank you.
So, in the other areas that we have with lifeguards, obviously, we train about 1,350 junior lifeguards a year, and 1,100 of those typically are residents. We do CPR in the schools, and that's where we go into Newport Harbor, and sometimes Corona Mar, and we actually teach the students in their health classes CPR, so they're better prepared in case of emergency, and it doesn't have to be necessarily in the ocean, and we do presentations. I also wanted to recognize our Recreation and Seasourages Department, because they do the swim lessons at both CDM and Newport Harbor, and you can see their totals over the last couple years have been reaching about 1,000 kids in water safety, and basically teaching them how to swim, and become more proficient in the ocean. And the one on the right is, if you ever go there, you'll probably see our city manager, I hate to keep throwing them under the bus, but he uses CDM frequently, and these are the number of attendances that are happening at CDM for the lap swimming in the evenings. And obviously, we're not all the way through 2017, but we're reaching 7,000 to 8,000 lap swimmers a year in CDM in the, in the evening, so it's a, it's not only a little bit of a moneymaker for the city, but it's actually a good area to prevent, and have older people, or actually everybody, be able to swim and utilize, I know, I'm older too, so be able to utilize our aquatic areas and become more proficient in swimming. So what the task, sorry, wrong way, the task force is doing for the 2018, is we wanna expand our membership to have all Orange County cities, we have about 17 to 20 right now that are participating, we wanna get into the 30s and have more participation. We also wanna pair with community organizations, we're working with Hope Hospital a lot right now, and it's not just Hope Newport, it's Hope Newport, Hope Irvine, and then Mission, which is developing curriculum for us, in both pool and ocean safety, so we're all consistently saying the same messages, so these are kinda tying together with the community organizations and developing curriculum, so we can go into schools, teach about ocean safety and pool safety, or we can give the materials to, to schools, and they can teach themselves, and hopefully, this is countywide. So if we're concentrating on ocean and beach safety, with a little bit of pool safety in our area, we, we can go into, say Anaheim, and say, here's the pool safety, and please have your firefighters, or your recreation, or your, your pool people, staff, go to educate the, the neighboring schools. We want a bigger presence on website and social media, and then the, the campaign, last year, this year, we focused on over 50, this year, we're gonna focus on parent and caregiver education. And that's all I have, so I thank you for your time, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief Williams. Any questions from the dais, or comments? Councilman Dixon?
Well, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief, I think it's a fantastic program, and I'm glad the city of Newport Beach has joined with the other cities to support, I'd like to see more cities. Thank you for referring to the event that I was down at the pier last memorial weekend, and on your organization chart, you list the vice chair is the mother of a drowning victim, and she was there that day, and that will sober you up really quickly.
Yes.
And to see how she's converted that tragedy, that family tragedy, into helping save the lives of other children. And, one thing, I don't, you might have mentioned briefly, one of the parts of the program that really impressed me is this watch monitor, or you wear, you could fashion any kind of...
Water watcher tag.
Water watcher tag, I think that's very effective, just whether it's a tag, or just designating, pointing, you are the water watcher, now I'm going to the restroom, I think that is so effective. And I've talked to other young parents about that, and it's just such an easy instruction and directive, that I think it's very effective.
Correct, and we have a number of those in, in the city, the fire department, with Chief Duncan and Chief Boyle, so they're available to any of our residents, and they're free of charge.
But without the tag, just saying, I'm stepping away, you are the water watcher, because she was, I was talking with the mother, and she was saying, it's just, everybody thinks somebody else is watching a child, and then that split second is, could turn into a tragedy. But anyway, thank you for your personal commitment to this, and I'm proud that the city of Newport Beach is participating, so thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman O'Neil?
Yeah, I'll just echo that real quick, and say thanks, Rob, for stepping up, and not only doing that, but also being the chair of this, it's, I know, I'm sure it takes quite a bit of time and effort, so, anyway, thanks for representing the city outside and in the county.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, public comments on this item? Next, we have advanced metering infrastructure, presentation from staff.
Have to warn you, this could be George's last presentation, so he may drone on and on and on.
Yeah, can we continue to the next meeting, then?
Yeah, can we continue to the next meeting then?
Well, good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the council. George Murdock with Municipal Operations. I'm going to introduce you to Stephen Katron, Utilities Manager. He's in charge of the water system and soon to be acting director in my place in another month or so. But Stephen's going to give you the presentation this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Good afternoon, Mayor Muldoon and members of the city council. Thank you for your time today to talk about this very exciting project, the utilities, Advanced Metering Infrastructure, or AMI. An AMI metering system would replace our existing antiquated direct read system with a new state-of-the-art, on-demand meter reading solution. A quick overview of today's presentation. We will start with a little background on how all the city's meters are currently read. What is the technology of AMI and how does it work? Review a few of the many benefits of AMI, both to the city as well as to the customer. Discuss the process of picking the selected vendor, how the project will roll out, cost of the project, and how it will be funded. And then we will end with a quick summary and open it up for discussion and questions from both you, the council, and the public. A quick background on our current water meters and how they are read. 24,750 of our 26,500 meters are direct read meters. These meters are read by a contractor. You may have seen them driving their scooters around town with safety vests saying meter reads, meter reader on their backs. There are five of these contract employees who perform these reads during the first couple of weeks of each month. We have 840 radio read meters. This is a drive-by metering solution where meter reads are collected via radio transmission once a month. These are spread throughout the city mainly on our larger accounts and are collected by a city employee. Currently, we have two AMI pilot projects in place. The first is 100 radio transmitting meters located on the peninsula. It was during this pilot that we were able to identify continuous usage of a popular restaurant that ended up being a leak on property. With this information, we were able to contact the restaurant and help them identify and rectify the leak, saving the restaurant money by also helping to save water. We also have three cellular transmitting meters spread throughout the city. These were used during the drought on high-consumption users. They were very useful in providing these customers with usage data trends, helping them change their usage habits. The city would not be the first to implement or install AMI systems. Laguna Beach County Water District was in the, is in the process of installing an AMI system. And both Huntington Beach and Fountain Valley have had AMI systems in place for a number of years. AMI meters are smart meters. Smart meters enable customers and the city the ability to monitor water usage in near or real time. A little bit about how the AMI technology works. Each water meter is outfitted with a transmitter. Once a day, the transmitter will send 24 meter reads to a repeater or collector via 900 megahertz radio transmission. 18 repeaters, about the size of a football, and 18 collectors, about the size of a backpack, will be spread throughout the city, placed on streetlights and a few fire stations and city facilities. One additional collector will be placed on a 320-foot tower in the city's utilities yard. All these meter reads are then transmitted from the collector via cellular or ethernet to the vendor-hosted server. The server will then translate reads and send out to, one, the city's billing system, Tyler Munus; two, the city's meter data management system. This will be available to staff both at their desktop and in the field on portable devices; and thirdly, the customer's engagement piece or portal with our current contractor, Smart Energy Water.
Quick question, Councilman O'Neal?
Yep. So before I ask this question, do you have a picture of the, what the collector would look like on a pole? You do? Okay, then I'll wait.
Finally, the vendor's network operations center. This is unique with this vendor as this is a manned facility managed by the vendor, making sure all the city's data is being properly transmitted. There are many benefits for both the customer and city with an AMI system. For the customer, through our customer interactive web portal with Smart Energy Water, customers can receive alerts for, one, leaks. If there is continuous use detected, this usually indicates a leak. Currently, with our direct read system, if a customer has a leak on property, it may take over 30 days to detect. This is also beneficial for the many Newport residents who spend long periods of time away from their homes. If they were to receive a leak alert, they could call city staff to run out and immediately shut off their water. High consumption, if their use, if their usage has unexpectedly increased over a period of time, the customer can be alerted. They can also analyze how and when they are using their water. This is always helpful, but especially during times of drought. Some of the benefits for the city. Industry standard states meters should be replaced after 15 to 20 years of service life. When a meter ages, it has a tendency to stop reading on the low end of flow. This equates to lost revenue for the city. Currently, 42% of the city's meters are in need of replacement, according to the standard. The AMI project would be replacing all these old and under-registering meters with new efficient meters. Lost revenue from these meters would now be recovered. From their desktop, city staff will be able to reach out to the meter and receive a real-time read of the meter. This is helpful for meter turn-ons and turn-offs. The meter data management system is where city staff will have all the AMI analytics at their fingertips. This will not only benefit utility staff, but also billing and customer support staff. Customer usage information will be easily obtained while speaking to the customer on the phone. High consumption, leaks, and non-reads will be sent to utility staff in report form on a daily basis. Staff could then contact customers of these incidents who are not signed up with Smart Energy Water. Billing reads are more accurate. And lastly, AMI supports water conservation and water shortage planning. This is a big deal for us as the AMI data will not only help the customer analyze and reduce their water usage, but for current and future reporting requirements levied on the city by the state, the AMI data will help streamline this process. During our last drought, it was very difficult to formulate our meter reads, meter reading data into reports and usable information. To truly understand the technology and the cost of an AMI system, the city decided to send out an RFP for AMI services. Selection of the AMI vendor was a difficult process for all those involved. The selection team included IT, meter, and management staff. Overall, it took over eight months to complete. After many years of researching AMI and our experience with the pilot programs, the city was able to develop a scope of work based on the customer and city needs from an AMI system. Benders were scored 70% technical and 30% cost. At the end of the process, Mueller Systems scored the highest and was chosen by the panel. Mueller is a very respected and reputable company that has brought cutting-edge technology to the AMI industry. If we were to move forward, that project would be implemented in two phases. During the proof of performance, or POP phase, we will work with Mueller on deployment of 250 meters and a select few collectors and repeaters in a specific area of town encompassing many different meter types. This POP phase is when Mueller will have the opportunity to prove their technology in-to-in, making sure their product lives up to everything they promised in their proposal. One of the big things the city will be looking at during this time will be the ease of integration into the city's Tyler Munus billing system and customer platform, Smart Energy Water. If the city is not satisfied with Mueller's product, the city will be able to opt out of the contract prior to moving on to the next phase. Mueller would then remove all its equipment, including the 250 meters, and no charge to the city. This will all be built into the contract. If the city is satisfied with Mueller's product, the process of full implementation will begin. Public outreach would be extensive. It would include discussions with HOAs, descriptions of the project on the city's website, door hangers detailing project, as well as when water will be turned off and on for installation. Training will be provided to city staff prior to the completion of the project. Now we get into the cost of the project. Total cost of the project is just over $9 million, which includes a 5% contingency. The contingency will help with what could be unforeseen costs, including pit box or meter box replacements. Because we are adding an antenna into the box with the meter, a few meters or services may need to be lowered so everything fits into the box. And some meter shut-off valves may need to be replaced. So how can we incorporate some cost savings into the project? Well, right now, $500,000 per year, or 1.5 million over the next three years remaining on the current meter replacement contract, will be voided with the approval of the AMI contract. This is a contract the city has with a contractor to replace old meters with new direct read meters. The city currently spends $320,000 per year for a contractor to direct read almost 25,000 of its meters. The AMI technology would eliminate the need for direct reading of all these meters. The city recently contracted the services of Valor Water Analytics. They are a company that specializes in identifying unaccounted-for water, which in turn equates to lost revenue. After placing our existing water meter infrastructure and history of meter reads into their equation, they were able to identify lost revenue at close to $540,000 per year. To be conservative, we used 80% or $450,000 per year of their findings. And lastly, the United States Bureau of Reclamation offers WaterSmart grants once a year. A few local agencies have obtained these grants for their AMI project. The city will be going after this grant with the help of a consultant that has been successful in obtaining them. With all these savings, the total cost of the project is right at $5.8 million. How do we anticipate funding this project? There are adequate water enterprise reserves to fund the AMI project. The last water rate increase was in 2014. Currently, the rate is stable, able to fund operations, the capital improvement program, CIP, and maintain the council reserve policy F2. The fixed charge in the rate was designed to recapture the costs of reading, maintaining, and replacing the various sizes of meters. The rate was built to fund non-CIP projects such as this one. This project will not require the city to raise rates and will continue to maintain the council reserve policy. Should council approve this project, the funding would be part of the annual budget process, moving funds from reserves to the non-master plan CIP account over a two- to three-year period. Return on investment for the project with the grant is eight years. And if we were unable to obtain the grant, it would be nine years. A quick summary. Mueller's technology product and professionalism is second to none. There are many benefits to an AMI system for both the customer and the city. The POP phase gives us the option to back out of the contract in case Mueller does not live up to our standards. The business plan of the project is to replace old, under-registering meters to recoup lost revenue with new AMI meters. Funding is available to pay for the project. Excuse me. Return on investment is eight to nine years.
Thank you. I think we have some questions while we're on this slide. All right. Let me interrupt, by the way. Are you...
No, go ahead.
Okay. Councilman Avery?
Something related. What cities locally have this in place now?
The Gooden Beach County Water District is in the process of implementing a new AMI system. Buena Park is also implementing a new system. Fountain Valley has a system already in place. Huntington Beach has a system in place. La Palma has a system in place. Those are just to name a few.
So they're working out?
Yes, they are working out.
As predicted. Thank you.
Councilwoman Dixon?
Thank you. Councilmember O'Neal was asking about the antenna pole. Can you show a close-up of that?
Sure.
Please.
So there's three pictures here. The first is the meter with the transmitter that will be inside the meter box. The second is a collector. And these collectors will be placed on top of city, streetlights, some city facilities and fire stations. And then there's the repeater on the last slide. And like I said, that's about the size of a football with the antenna on top of it.
Okay, I guess someone could debate the aesthetics of the collector. That seems pretty big. But refresh my memory, I think two years ago, were we, was this part of the pilot where we had an app that was measuring during the drought? We were looking at water consumption. Is this, will there be an app feature to this so people can know readily?
Yes. Yes, so I mentioned a few times, our contract with Smart Energy Water. The customer will be able to get their water usage analytics through this app, which is with the Smart Energy Water, which is already in place.
What have we learned through the pilot program with the 800, I think, did I see 800? Anyway, whatever 100 number, name, resident unit you've been looking at, what have we learned? Any corrections and best practices that we can apply going forward?
With the AMI system, the 100 meters that we have out in place right now down on the peninsula, immediately, we found a few leaks on property. So we were able to reach out with, and talk to the customers and help rectify their leaks. We've found that the reads are extremely accurate. We aren't having to go out and reread. So we have to send now with our direct read system. We send a lot of people out, or we send staff out in the field to do re-reads. So we don't have to do that because we can actually reach out and grab a read from a meter if we need to, if there's a misread. But with the AMI system, there's not very many misreads.
In terms of cost savings over current operating costs, you had talked about that we have contractors who go around the community during the first week of every month to read meters. Will we still need that service or the full complement of the service that we currently have?
No, we would be able to eliminate that service.
Have you factored that into the cost of the program?
Yes, that was one of the bullets that I had. It was 320,000. That contract is $320,000 per year. We'd be able to eliminate that.
And that goes away. Great.
That goes away.
Okay, well, good. Thank you very much.
Sure.
I haven't decided if being a meter maid on a scooter is the best job in the world or the worst job in the world. It depends on how many years you do it. Yeah. Councilman O'Neal?
Yeah, let's go back to that slide with the pictures, please. So one of the concerns that I've got is that, and one of the concerns I have is that we've, we're getting hit up for quite a few of the space, quite a bit of the space on our poles because we're getting the discussions from cellular companies like Verizon.
I have to accuse myself at this moment, given my involvement with wireless communications.
Yeah, that might be true because I'm about to ask questions about space and rent and Duff, are you ready to take control?
Roger.
So anyway, so one of the concerns I've got is that we've got a pretty decent amount of applications in coming in for space on our poles. So we've got the cellular companies asking for space. I can't remember if it's the gas company or SC, it's gas company, asking for space, although it seems like they actually want to put up their own poles and I got to admit that they're very ugly. And then the, and because they're so big, and so that's the concern I've got is that aesthetically, I'm a little concerned about what it's going to look like if we start putting the collectors on all of the poles. And admittedly, this might be a question for Simone as well, but as we're going through a process like this, how do we, how do we handle, and maybe Dave, you could probably handle this too. How do we handle the fact that we are getting so many applications for our pole space that we're looking now at our own, doing our own for the cities? So how do we handle, how are we handling that?
So you're right, there's about three folks that want to use our streetlight poles. The first one are the telecom, and we have, you're right, a couple of vendors that carriers that want to come in. Those will be custom poles that don't even look like this. We haven't fully vetted that out, working with Simone and his staff and Public Works about hiding some of the things inside of a custom pole. So it'll look different.
Okay.
The gas company, as you write, there, as you mentioned, the standalone pole is very ugly with a big twin antenna thing on it. We don't allow that in the city, so we've been adding those to streetlights. They're already up and running. The street, so if they're out there, you don't know that, but you'll see them on arterials like Jamboree and other areas, their frequency, they need less of them because they have a different frequency and they can reach the gas meters. In areas where private communities, it's troublesome, Newport Coast and others where we don't own the streetlights, some of the HOAs, and that's a discussion really for HOAs and the gas company. On this system, we're showing poles. We don't even have, we have a few of these types of poles. This is just an example. But the goal with putting any antenna on a streetlight poles, not to put it in front of somebody's house. Remember, there's 18 and we're trying to read 26,000 meters with a city that's fairly large. The goal would be is to use public facilities, fire stations, restroom, anything we can to get it off of the poles or put it in a pole area that is a main arterial where you're not even going to notice it. So the goal here is not to upset our residents, of course, and as Stephen mentioned, we would have HOA meetings, we would do the same notice that we would do with any of the telecom. At the end of the day, I think we're very protective of what's in front of someone's home. home. We know that that's, you know, they spent a lot of money on that home, and they don't want to look at a telecom, a gas company, or a city antenna. So that, there is a process they'll have to go through to do this, and we're very protective of that.
Yeah, I might have missed it. Did you say how many of these collectors we'd probably have to put up?
About 18.
Oh, that's it?
Yes.
Okay.
So you remember, citywide. The repeaters don't have to go on a street post like that either. That's just kind of what they look like. They're smaller. So you may get a collector that's in one collector for a large area, and you have a couple of repeaters. So they've, we haven't vetted exactly where they're going to go, but of course, as you know, city staff's very, very protective about what's been installed.
And we also, we wouldn't do these in Newport Coast because that's Irvine Ranch, right? Or Santa Ana Heights, right?
Right. So these would only go in the areas where we serve water, so it wouldn't be Santa Ana Heights, it wouldn't be Newport Coast, it wouldn't be in the same areas.
True. Okay. That's interesting. And then I had a couple other questions, but Councilwoman Dixon, were you going to ask about this particular slide also?
No, but you go ahead, do a follow-up on this.
Okay. So would you mind, Stefan, going back to the funding slide? I wanted to ask.
Just briefly, is there other questions about telecom so Mayor Maldon can come back? Or do you have other questions?
No.
I just had one suggestion that we encourage the vendor to, as technology advances, to keep us abreast in whether we can afford to or whether they'll do it for no charge or whatever, to replace them with smaller. Obviously, they'll get smaller and smaller and smaller, so we should keep that in mind.
You know, Stefan mentioned two different things. There was the cellular and the radio, and in our pilot, you mentioned, Councilmember Dixon, about what we learned. The cellular works anywhere. It's nice. You don't need an antenna, and they can communicate. Sorry, not about policy, but the cellular folks, the problem was it comes with a monthly cost. So you have to pay. Where radio, if you invest in the system, there is no cost. So if you look at the long-term cost payback, although it's beautiful to not have an antenna, the cellular does come with a cost to a carrier. So, sorry, Mr. Maldon.
Any more cellular questions?
You still asking a question?
Yes.
Could you go back one more slide? So one of the other questions I was having while I was looking at this slide was the, where are we on the water master plan? Is that out for, is that with a vendor right now to be? I don't need to know exactly when it's coming back, but is it with a vendor that is conducting an update of our master plan?
Right. Our Pilot Works Department has a contractor that's doing the water master plan currently.
Okay. Are we anticipating a discussion in that water master plan about moving to a program like this? In other words, when we get back to water master plan, would we be anticipating that they'd be recommending we move to a radio? I'm not sure how to phrase this.
I think I know where you're going, but they asked us that question. Should we just integrate this into a 20-year plan? We didn't add that in there. So the first master plan, the last couple of master plans that was done was primarily about pipeline replacement. We didn't add facilities. We didn't add non-master plan projects like water treatment plant upgrades or AMI. The new one will. They are adding that. This one here, since the master plan's not done, we haven't talked about funding, we pulled it out of there. Again, this would be more of a commitment to a one-time vendor. One thing you don't want is to have five different vendors supplying an AMI system. You really do have to commit to one or another. So it would be a one-time project. But no, this isn't part of it. We could add it into the CIP master plan anyways, over the next several years.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Just a quick technical question. So on the installation, on that private visual, so it would be inserted into the current box that the water meter is now, do we have to shut off water for a period of time on a block, on a street, while this is installed? And what would that, how would the installation process work?
So those are the transmitters, and those would, what they would do, the contractor would come around and put a flyer on the door or a door hanger, and they would do each house individually. And each house would probably take about 20 to 30 minutes to do the install.
Thank you. Do you have any further?
So in summary, staff is very excited at the possibility of updating our water meter system to AMI. We anticipate bringing this project back to council in the first part of 2018. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Seeing no council comments requested this time, any public comments on this item?
Mayor Maldon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. It sounds like everybody is interested in this, if it's deployed, being done as unobtrusively as possible. We have heard that the gas company is doing a very similar thing to read their meters, and they need a collection system. Obvious question, we heard it's a different frequency, but is there any possibility that we could share those collectors so we don't need a duplicate set, one for gas meters, one for water meters? And a related question to that, the electric company has been reading its meters for a number of years using, I believe, a different kind of technology that doesn't require those collectors on streetlight poles at all. And I'm not an expert on this. I believe what Southern California Edison does is the meter on one house transmits its information to the one on the next, that transmits the information to the next, the next, the next, and so on, until it gets to the central data collection point without any outside metering, collecting, and so forth. And I'm wondering if there is a water meter vendor that would use that same technology that would be similarly inobtrusive as the way that the electric company does. And finally, the electric company, obviously, on their electric meters, has electricity available to power their transmitters, which are very low power because they only have to transmit from one house to the next. Water meters typically don't have an electrical connection next to them, so I'm assuming these 25,000 transmitters that we're going to install are each going to have to have a battery in them. And I'm wondering how long the batteries last and how often the city is going to have to go out and replace those. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Seeing none, just the battery question. Could you answer that?
The battery service life, life is 20 years.
Better than Duffy.
Yeah.
Sorry, that came across really rude. Sorry.
We can have a debate on it.
Any council comments on this item, any polite ones? Thank you very much, staff.
This one, I'll just say, I think this is a great idea. I know that when they did the pilot program, people loved seeing how much water they were using in specific instances, and obviously, we're not out of, we're sort of, I mean, there's no drought emergency declared, but we know that that's coming back. And so the cost, obviously, is pretty high, but when we're talking about an enterprise fund, and we're also hearing that the reserves have been adequately funded to the point where even after spending it, we'll be in a position where we wouldn't have to raise rates and also comply with the council policies, dealing with the adequate reserve funding. I mean, it comes down to, frankly, it feels like a no-brainer, doesn't it? I mean, it's, this is the wave where we ought to be going forward anyway. So I know this is years in the making, George, and you're not going to be here to see it done, but anyway, thank you.
Thank you, George. Thank you. Public comments on agenda and non-agenda items, please come forward. Close session, Mr. Arp.
The city council will adjourn to closed session to discuss items 4A through D, including meeting with City Manager Dave Kiff, Assistant City Manager Carol Jacobs, the Human Resources Director Barbara Salvini, and Peter Brown to discuss labor negotiations with those unions listed under Agenda Item Number 4A. Meeting with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation by the unions and individuals listed under Agenda Item Number 4B, which is all related to the Flores versus City of San Gabriel decision. Meeting with legal counsel to discuss potentially initiating litigation in regards to one matter. And in regards to that, Item 4C, Councilmember Herdman will be recusing himself for the item based upon his real property interest. And finally, meeting with legal counsel regarding the litigation entitled Newport Beach versus Federal Aviation Administration.
Thank you. We are recessed till 7:00 regular meeting.
Call the meeting to order for the November 28, 2017, regular meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record roll reflect that all members of council are present.
Thank you. Ms. Harper, is there a closed session report?
Thank you, Mayor Maldon. There's no closed session report this evening.
This time, please rise to be led in vocation by Councilman Scott Piattar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to take the opportunity to read Thanksgiving proclamation that George Washington gave on October 3, 1789, by the President of the United States. Whereas it is the duty of all nations to acknowledge the providence of Almighty God, to obey His will, and to be grateful for His benefits, and humbly to implore His protection and favor. And whereas both Houses of Congress have, by their joint committee, requested me to recommend to the people of the United States a day of public Thanksgiving and prayer to be observed by acknowledging with grateful hearts the many signal favors of the Almighty God, especially by affording them an opportunity peaceably to establish a form of government for their safety and happiness. And if you'd join me. God, thanks for the way that you provided and through your providence created and helped found this country. We look to you for your wisdom tonight, in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. And now we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilwoman Dixon, excuse me.
Flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City council announcements, including, these are non-discussion items, and new items council members would like to be introduced. Madam Clerk.
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow signing card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional signing card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited, three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. City council announcements and new items council members would like to be introduced for future agendas. Mr. O'Neil.
None, thank you.
Mr. Piattar.
None.
Ms. Dixon.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of announcements. First, number one, it gives me great pleasure and honor to salute a 2007 graduate of Newport Harbor High School. My niece Emily Lise Hastings has brought great honor to our community and to our family. On November 18, a week ago, I was honored to attend Emily's graduation from the U.S. Marines Officer Candidate School in Quantico, Virginia, and her promotion ceremony to Second Lieutenant in the United States Marines. Emily was one of 23 women promoted. Her class of 226 started out with 56 women, who spent the last four months in boot camp for officers in training. Now that she has become an officer in the United States Marines, she embarks on another six months of battlefield training, boot camp on steroids. Emily has an amazing dedication to our country and to her fellow Marines. I am in awe. It was a ceremony honoring our servicemen and women, presided over by a member of the Joint Chiefs of Staff, that I will never forget. Emily and her husband, warrant officer, another officer in the United States Marines, Jameson Hastings, who is pinning in this photo her Second Lieutenant ribbon. They serve all of us with great distinction. I sleep well at night. And a big shout-out to my sister Wendy Lise, who raised Emily as a single widowed mother, to be the best she can be as she serves her country with selfless determination, dedication, and honor. It is my great pleasure to recognize my niece. Thank you. Thank you. I think they're all watching tonight, so thank you. That's so deeply appreciated. This week, on Thursday, November 30, I have my 17th town hall during my term of office. And this meeting, again, at Marina Hall, is on Thursday at 7:00 PM. For those of you who normally come at 6:30, I'll be there, but at 7:00, we'll start. Dave Kiff will be our lead speaker, talking on a matter that's of great concern to our community, and he has been having community meetings in the last month or so. Bring your comments and questions about the FAA's Next Gen program, our favorite topic affecting all parts, most parts of our community, and the resulting changes in flight departure paths from John Wayne Airport. And the agenda for the town hall is really FAA-related. It's all-consuming, and it's good that Dave's going to be there to inform, educate, and set the record straight. So I look forward to anyone who wants to attend. It doesn't have to just be District 1 residents. Anyone is welcome to attend. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Herdman.
Since our last council meeting, I attended, along with our mayor, the Citizens Police Academy graduation. This program has been going on for several years, and I have yet to find a participant who doesn't think it's about the best thing they've ever done. We had our first community roundtable airport information meeting on November 17. City Manager Dave Kiff and I ran that meeting here in this room. There was close to 100 people there with a number of questions about John Wayne Airport and the flight takeoff path, Next Gen. The Next Forum, if you will call it, is scheduled for Friday, December 8, from 3:00 to 4:30 PM here in council chambers again. Again, this is just an informational meeting, an opportunity for the community to interact with myself, with our city manager, about airport issues, and also to receive information. Let's see. And then on December 11, will be our next aviation committee meeting at 4:00 here at City Hall in the afternoon. I had fun the day before Thanksgiving over at Oasis, serving Thanksgiving lunch to about 100 seniors over there. They invite us to come help serve lunch, and I get a kick out of that. They call me the master server because I used to be in the restaurant business. And I think that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Avery.
None.
Duffy.
I have none.
City Clerk's office will be accepting new and unwrapped toys for children of our troops, new or used DVDs for the troops, and gift cards and cash donations for the families through Yellow Ribbon Campaign's Operation Christmas. Help bring holiday cheer to Orange County's military and their families. Let's show them how much Newport Beach appreciates them. Operation Christmas is a program organized by Yellow Ribbon America. You can look it up at www.yellowribbonamerica.com. That supports more than 300,000 members of the armed services and their families. If you'd like to participate, please drop off your donations to the City Clerk's office or Oasis Senior Center by noon on December 22. Matters which council members have asked to be placed on future agendas. These are not up for discussion. The mayor will see if three council members or more would like to discuss a matter of future date. For to discuss a matter of future date. For consideration this evening is modifications and improvements to the visual displays in the city council chambers proposed by Councilman Piattar. All of those in support of further discussion, please raise your hand.
Six of seven. Councilmember Hurdman not raising his hand.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
This is a time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 19. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
The consent calendar this evening is here. I'm sure it has a lot of your attention tonight. Most of you are probably here to see the paving contract we're going to hand out to one of our contractors. But if you're here for Banning Ranch, in all seriousness, it'll be part of this consent calendar. You'll see how the vote is going to go before public comment, and you'll see likely how many members will be supporting the rescinding of the plan. So at this time, council members, any items to pull from the consent calendar? Mr. O'Neill.
None, but I lodge a recusal on number nine due to ownership interest in a club with property within 500 feet.
Thank you. Mr. Piattar.
Item number five I'd like to discuss.
Mrs. Dixon.
I need to recuse myself, which is the water, H, please. Thank you. Due to resident, I live nearby, apparently.
Thank you. Mr. Hurdman.
I need to recuse myself from item number five because of real property interests within 500 feet of this project.
Thank you. Mr. Avery.
None.
Mayor Protem Duffield.
I need to recuse myself on items number four and six because of business.
And I'd recuse myself on item nine as it relates to potential membership at a club that has property, real property interests near the signing question. Mayor Protem Duffield, do you have a motion?
I do. I move the balance of the consent calendar, items 1 through 19, with item number five pulled by Councilman Piattar, and a recusal on item number five from Councilman Hurdman, with a recusal on item nine from Councilman O'Neill, and with a recusal on item eight from Councilwoman Dixon, and with a recusal on item number nine from Mayor Muldoon, and a recusal from myself on items four and six. Second.
Mr., I'm sorry. Mr. Duffield, Mr. Mayor, before you maybe incorporate this into Mr. Duffield's motion, I apologize I have to do this. On item four, we have a modified resolution. I was hoping you'd include that in the motion. On item 14, we have a modified contract. And then on item number 10, the FONBAS agreement, Councilmember Dixon had asked that we change a term to refer to Charity Watch. Actually said Charity Navigator, but I talked with her, and I think Charity Watch is a better organization. So if you could authorize the mayor to execute that cooperative agreement with the Charity Watch charity standard in there. So, sorry about that.
Stipulate to those changes, Mayor Protem Duffield.
Yes, please. Include those items. Second.
Thank you. And before I go out to public comments and we hold a public vote on this item, it looks like the repeal is going to be supported unanimously as no votes were lodged at this time. So if you're considering speaking, that may not be necessary this time, but of course you still have the right to. So at this time, any public comments on the consent calendar, please come forward.
710, please.
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is John McClendon. I'm the attorney for the Banning Ranch Conservancy. And it's been a long fight, and tonight I'm here after five years of litigation to formally serve the court's peremptory writ of mandate on the city and U.S. Members of the City Council. And I will just simply read from it its brief. "To respondent, City of Newport Beach and City Council of the City of Newport Beach, and to their attorneys of record, after the California Supreme Court's determination that you abused your discretion by certifying an inadequate environmental impact report for real partying interests so-called Newport Banning Ranch Project, and judgment having been entered in this proceeding in favor of petitioner Banning Ranch Conservancy, ordering that a peremptory writ of mandate issued under seal of this court, it is ordered that immediately upon service of this writ, respondent, City of Newport Beach and City Council of the City of Newport Beach shall set aside and vacate all approvals relating to the project and take no further steps toward approving or otherwise implementing the development of the project unless and until respondent certify an environmental impact report which addresses the deficiencies identified by the California Supreme Court and is otherwise in compliance with the requirements of the California Environmental Equality Act. Respondents shall file a return to this writ no later than 45 days from the date this writ is issued, setting forth what respondents have done to comply with the foregoing order, let the writ of mandate issued dated November 9th, 2017." I noticed tonight on your consent calendar, you're going to do exactly that. On behalf of my client, I want to thank you for complying with the court's order tonight. And also, I want to concur with staff's decision that doing so is a nondiscretionary ministerial duty contrary to what was reported in the paper. It's not might, you must because of the court order. Thank you all very much.
It is our pleasure to comply with a nondiscretionary court order. And just for the record, that the ruling involved prior council, not this city council. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, council members. I'm Steve Ray. I'm the executive director of the Banning Ranch Conservancy. We are here tonight to thank you for the action you are about to take. And as you note, Mr. Mayor, it is nondiscretionary, but nonetheless, we do appreciate it. And we would like to note for the record also that no member of this current council was on the deciding council against whom we had to litigate on this case. So we appreciate the action you're taking. And moving forward, you know, because we want to move forward with this. In 2006, the voters of this city passed a general plan amendment, making the preservation of Banning Ranch as open space and park the priority for that land. It also in there charged the city with trying to acquire the land for such purposes. Now, we don't think the city conducted an adequate attempt to try to acquire the property to save it as open space and park in furtherance of the voters' wishes. So we have taken on that fight ourselves to try to do so, the Conservancy. However, we are at a point now where the project that was passed is officially dead with your action tonight. There is no further action to be taken on it. And we want to move forward in the acquisition. We have some means to do so. We have some financial partners to move forward with that, and we will be presenting more information to you in the future on that. But what I'm asking for tonight is that you seriously consider the wishes of the residents as expressed in the 2006 vote for the general plan amendment, that that land be preserved permanently as open space and park, and that the city be involved in its acquisition. Now, that doesn't mean we're not asking you to come up with all the money or anything like that. We have the means and a pathway to do that. However, we do want you to partner with us. We want to work together with the city to make this happen because we think that this would be a tremendous asset for all the residents of the city, as well as residents of the entire region who will come down here and enjoy this. We think it has a great economic benefit to the city as a recreational resource, and we have plans for that. We have a vision plan that we want to share with you and show you what we want to do and how we want to achieve it. But again, we want to work with the city to do this. So with that, I would ask that we meet with you sometime as close as we can in the future. Our president, Dr. Terry Welsh, is also here to address you, and he will ask you more specifically for that. But again, we want to thank you for your consideration. We appreciate that hopefully in the future you will be willing to work with us, and that any future for the Banning Ranch project can be done in a harmonious and cooperative fashion and not have to go through all the recriminations that have led to this moment tonight. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Black. This has been a long, long battle, and I just wanted to share how pleased I am with our community, how engaged they are, and how much they care to participate in our civic issues. So I just have one quote I want to share, and it's by somebody named Dinos Christinopoulos. And it's, he was a poet, and it's, "They tried to bury us, but they didn't know we were seeds." So think about that for a minute. All right. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello. My name is Terry Welsh, and I am president of the Banning Ranch Conservancy. And for the last 18 years, I have scheduled, announced, prepared an agenda for, and shared a Banning Ranch meeting once a month at least, and usually twice a month. So do the math. That's about 300 or 350 meetings. But it's not just meetings. I have literally worked on Banning Ranch every day for the last 18 years. You know, if it's not the thing I wake up thinking about, it's the thing that kept me up the night before. You know, I can't seem to get away from it. Our family went to Maui last summer, and as I was sitting there on a beautiful beach, watching a spectacular sunset, I was thinking about Banning Ranch. Now, you could say that I'm committed, or you could say that I'm obsessed, or you could say that I'm crazy. But what I would say is that I prioritize the acquisition of Banning Ranch as an open space amenity. So council, I humbly stand before you tonight and plead with you to each individually prioritize the acquisition of Banning Ranch as an open space amenity. Now, since we started, our position has been very consistent and very clear, and that is that Banning Ranch should be purchased at fair market value, at a price which is agreeable to the public, but more importantly, agreeable to the owners. And you can talk to anyone in the Banning Ranch community, and they'll tell you the same thing, that as much as we've done during the last 18 years, we could do so much more if we had the full resources of the City of Newport Beach behind us. So in closing, I challenge you all to show those naysayers and doubting Thomases out there that when Newport Beach prioritizes the acquisition of Banning Ranch, Newport Beach prioritizes the acquisition of Banning Ranch. So we would love to follow up with you in the weeks ahead, and we plan on reaching out and meeting with you and comparing notes. And on that note, thank you, good night, and God bless America.
Thank you. Please hold your applause, folks. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Terry Coken. I'm a fairly regular purer before the Costa Mesa City Council. And I'd like to say that never at Costa Mesa have I seen a council that is so attentive to the speakers as you guys. Thank you very much. I'm a supporter of the Banning Ranch Open Space Proposal. I think my wife dragged me into it, and if she hadn't been there, well, I might not have been. But here I am. And I just want to thank you for your vacation of this thing. It's been a long time in coming. Eternal vigilance is the price of liberty. It's also the price of open space. And we, who are in the Banning Ranch Conservancy, are going to come back. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yes. I believe there's a mooring resolution for adoption. I agree with almost all of it, except for the chain schedule that they're trying to get adopted, that I believe has come before the council years ago and was rejected because there's serious deficiencies that the regulations don't have in it, the existing regulations for the chain sizes. The new regulations would limit the sizes to, not necessarily unreasonable, but there are stronger chains that can be used, according to the regulations, better grade chain. Generally, chain sizes go in eighth inch increments, and seven eighths, for example, was left out. And the chain schedule, I believe, now is set up for grade 30. However, it's more proper to use a grade 43 or higher, which approximately three times stronger than what is proposed in the schedule, and is about the same price. Appears to me that perhaps inferior chain has been used and is being used currently, that invoices, purchase invoices should be investigated on those. And that's why this schedule was introduced, because they want to legitimize several years rather than the regulation, I believe, is 17.25.020, I believe it's I-5. The chain is to be, the breaking strength is to be six times the weight of the mooring. If they use an inferior chain, it's not going to be that strength. A little more difficult to calculate than a straight schedule. But using a straight schedule like this, I believe allows inferior chains to be used by a mooring contractor. My proposal would be to alter that, your proposal, to leave the chain schedule, I mean, the chain requirements as the regulations state them now, that they must be a minimum of six times the breaking strength of the weight of the mooring. Mooring is 3,000 pounds, you use 1,000 pounds of strength. For instance, one of the sizes that's left out, if it was a grade 43, seven eighths chain, is about 172,000 pounds, where that's almost 10 times the strength chain that's recommended. All I have, I guess.
Thank you, sir.
And some information, council, that I would like them to read.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Evening, council. My name is Kevin Nelson. I'm the founder of a small nonprofit called Nature Commission. I'd be speaking in favor of the preservation of Banning Ranch. And I think what I would do is just prioritize it a little bit by starting off with the rights of the owners. You know, those companies certainly have their private property rights. I would say that those rights might be conditioned, in your opinions, in judgment calls by the fact that, you know, they're really headed by a couple of large oil companies, Shell and Exxon, at the peak of the corporate ladder, followed by a couple of other companies, Era Energy and Brook Street, which is a local entity. That chain, when they proceeded to buy in, when they bought in and gambled on the development of Banning Ranch, sealed their deal in 2005. When you look at what was done afterwards, I think very much aggregates or should condition your opinions on their rights on this. Because when you look at the satellite maps in 2007 and '09, that land was plastered. It was basically a kill-the-habitat program before presenting to the agencies. That program consisted of tractoring every, all of the habitat. That program consisted of tractoring every, all of the habitat, including where species had already been located, like net catchers and other protected species, and limiting that as much as possible wherever it was in the development footprint. I think that's just a really low qualifier for the way this place has been handled, and it was consistently done, and it was only stopped when the Coastal Commission and U.S. Fish and Wildlife ordered them to stop. So that's a key thing. They're a great bunch of people. They really are. But I think this was mishandled from the beginning on a place that is pretty important. So, but they still have their rights, okay? But if we could purchase that, it would be a great achievement for the city. In terms of Banning itself, I think we can put it in context in a couple of ways. First, regionally, we know how much development has gone on. There are almost no places like Banning Ranch left, with the magic of that place being the confluence of three or four elements: grasslands of the mesa, orroyos, bluffs, and then the lowland sarp marsh. When you get the combination of all those with a lot of rich vegetation and species, rare species, like predatory birds and many others, and the vernal pools out there, you have a high concentration of valuable habitat. That's good for the animals, but at some point in time, it's going to be good, very good for people. Why will that happen? In the larger context, again, regionally, we've had all this development. Across the world, just two weeks ago, 15,000 scientists signed a document which said, again, that we are stressing all of the world's natural resources, except for one, the ozone hole, which is healing. So when you put Banning in that context, and every one of these decisions is local, this is something that we can do local to work towards this faithfully and see whether we can keep this intact, because it's the mass and the liveliness and those physical elements that make Banning important. And if we can give that the time to see if we can save it all without impacts of development, we'll have a place of great value for Newport.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
And considering we've got sea level rise, which is going to shrink Newport's namesake, which is his beaches, right? That's the environment in action.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mike Muller with Newport Banning Ranch and Brook Street. Just a couple of observations and in a statement I'd like to, sentiment I'd like to convey to the city. In listening to Terry talk about fair market value, and then it's got to be acceptable to the public, fair market value is often determined by the highest and best use of the property. So there's an inborn conflict on some of Terry's comments there. If it were as simple as all that, the next question I would ask you is where are you going to come up with this money, since it doesn't appear to be anywhere that we've seen? And lastly, in the 18 years that Terry's devoted his work, and I have a lot of respect for Terry Welsh, not one offer, not one discussion has occurred about value or an offer to purchase the property. Having said that, that's not why I'm here tonight. I'm really here to thank the city, not just you for what you're doing tonight. What you're doing tonight is required by the court. We get it. We have no opposition to it. It's finalizing a chapter. And it falls out of what we think was a misguided decision by the Supreme Court, but we're stuck with it, and we're all living with it. We are committed to a future for the property that can hopefully include accelerated oil cleanup. Oil's now three times what it was when the project went through its torture chamber. It's profitable again out there, and the oil company has the right to drill another 77 wells. But we still have our hope for that, hope for open space, public access, and an economic incentive to allow all of that to occur, whether that's the 40 acres we tried to get developed out of 400, 10%, or some other scheme. We're going to look forward in next year to sitting down with you, to sitting down with Steve and Terry, and having more discussions, and see how we can create a better communication and a kinder communication between all of us. There's no attempt to bury anybody. We're just exercising our property rights, and we thought we had a formula that would allow everybody to win. It didn't work, but we'll be back with more ideas. We may get more ideas from these guys. So I want to thank the city for taking action, but I also want to thank the city, the prior council, and I want to thank staff for pursuing the hard fight. We made a commitment back in 2012. It didn't work out. Mr. McLendon read the writ. It's all accurate. But the city stepped up, defended its action, and we appreciate the fact that they thought this property could serve both the public and the property owner. So I walk away with that. We look forward to seeing you next year. I wish everybody in this crowd a good holiday season, and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Muller. Next speaker, please.
Mayor and counsel, Tim Stokes. I get the pleasure of doing something really nice tonight, and by codifying our agreement with the city for Friends of Newport Beach Animal Shelter. Once upon a time, then-Mayor Dixon gave us a polite nudge to create a public-private partnership to help support our newly designed, or newly founded animal shelter that the city, the police department now maintains. We created a nonprofit called Friends of Newport Beach Animal Shelter, so we could have that ability to fund programs and things that the city was ambitious about. Our main goal is helping every animal that comes to the Newport Beach Animal Shelter find a happy home. But also, we'd like to try and do one-up and create a world-class animal shelter, which means a lot of fundraising and a lot of great things from people that really admire animals in our city. So we want to, as they say, give a voice to our animals. So tonight, we're hopeful that the agreement with the Friends comes about, and we can start the process of that private-public partnership. So thank you, then-Mayor Dixon. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Next speaker, please.
David Tanner, Newport Beach resident and business owner. I wanted to speak on the Banning Ranch, and I wanted to kind of voice my disgust with the process that has led us to this point. From the speakers, the process has been going on for a decade to 18 years, something like that. Millions of dollars have been spent, thousands of man-hours have been invested to get us to this point. Well, that's what's happened. That's where we are. So my question is, can we learn from this? What can we do? Because I certainly don't want to see this process repeated, either for this project or any other project in the city. So I come before you tonight, and I ask the council, I ask the city, I ask the community to come up with some kind of a legally allowable process to give an indication to a project applicant as to whether or not there's a possibility of a yes vote or probably a no vote. There are a lot of laws, but I think we have some of the best staff and best legal counsel available, and I'm confident that if they looked outside the box, they could come up with some kind of a procedure to let developers know before they've spent years and hundreds of thousands of dollars and thousands of man-hours that this is something that has a chance to succeed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Sir, there's a, Mr. Carter is going to speak.
I just want to say, I think I forgot to give my name. It's John Panik.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I'm sorry, and I meant Carter Ford, Mr. Ford.
Well, I'll answer to either. Thank you, Mayor. Well done. I'm here, my name is Carter Ford. I'm here to speak on the consent counter item number four, the proposed resolution for, or the specifications for moorings at Newport Harbor. I particularly wish to express support, and we're sorry to see Councilman Duffy will have to leave, but that's the way it is with the recusment. The process and product I am here to speak in support of. It's been a wonderful process, and when you have that, you typically end up with a good product as well. That process, a quick refresher, began with initiative of staff, Chris Miller and others, many, many months ago, looking at concerns they had. That turned into a report that went through the harbor commission. From there, it went to council, and that's when I became involved. And our credit to all of you for recommending increased amount of public input. That then happened. We had already on the books a special meeting of the mooring association. We combined that with an opportunity for the city's new harbor master, Dennis Durgan, to present his staff, and it was a wonderful accumulation of people at that meeting, well over 100 folks, just the mooring holders. And then from the city, more staff than I've had the pleasure of seeing in years, starting with our city manager, Dave Kiff. Thank you, sir, for being there. It was great to have you there. Assistant city manager was there, the director of public works, what was there, the new harbor master, Dennis Durgan, the head of the harbor resources, Chris Miller, the chairman of the harbor commission was there. So it was a thorough, broad group of people, as Councilman Avery thought we hopefully would have, and many people could have an exchange of information. So what came out of that, and I'll limit my comments, and I better go faster, I bet, there were four basic items in what came to you back in September. The outcome is as follows: As compared to a across-the-board increase in weights for everybody of 20% and an average cost of maybe $500 and over $1,000 if you had a 60-foot mooring or more, it is now, that is not going to happen. The schedule is going to remain as it is, but what is going to be added, which really does a great thing and has wide support, is the, any boat that drags its mooring shall be required, the owner shall be required to increase the weights by a minimum of 20% immediately. So rather than having a program that was going to take two years to get through, and boats could still be dragging, if it drags, you got to add weight. So that's much supported by all the folks. Secondly, the chain, may I wrap up? Thank you, sir. The chain schedule, as far as what was presented in September and is presented now, is essentially the same, and that's the way I'm going to duck what is a very thorough analysis by Captain Panik, and I respect him, but you're getting what you got in September, and that's, there's always opportunity for further review, but we were satisfied with what you had in September and what came up now. Next, the style of the buoys. Rather than forcing anybody at their next servicing to spend what amounted to $600 plus to replace the buoy, a solution was developed and came up and is now in here, that the installation of the safety chain, which accomplishes the goal of taking care of the risk of breaking the old style. So that accomplishes the goal, and again, had wide support. So that's in here for tonight. Lastly, the sandline proposal, which the mooring association did do a survey, and there were speakers tonight at the meeting, and frankly, yes, in terms of something, if it were being forced upon everybody, what we got back was two-thirds of the people didn't want that. But however, to the extent that the city is wanting to work with this, has 10 moorings of its own that have sandlines, it only makes sense to put it in the Title 17, that these are allowed. And as far as individuals, however, they're only going to be allowed with the permission of the city, and we're being sure that it's not something right now that's going to be imposed. It's something to work and process to see how it can work out. So for all those reasons, I thank you all. We're in support, and if you have any questions, I mean, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Nope. Next speaker, please. Seeing none? Back to the dais. No request to speak further? Let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance, Title IV, Item 3, and ordinance of the city council of the city of Newport Beach repealing all approvals for the Newport Banning Ranch Plan Committee project. That's ordinance number 2017-17. Councilmember Avery, I need your vote. Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Thank you. On to the next, no applause, please. Thank you, folks. Councilman Piotr requested to pull Item 5 for discussion. Mr. Piotr, do you want a staff report on this?
I can do with a minimum one.
Oh, I'm sorry. One second, Mr. Piotr. Jeff? Hey, Jeff? You had a recusal?
Councilman Herman previously announced his recusal, so you just need to leave the room until they finish with the item. It's Gen item number five.
Thank you. Mr. Piotr?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to bring this, excuse me, to the council's attention, and I've already talked to staff and answered, a lot of my technical questions have been answered, but this was presented as a replacement of existing water lines. And so the question that I had was, well, gee, why aren't we using some sort of sleeving technology, because it's easier, cheaper, et cetera? And I was a little disheartened to find out that of the lines that are presented here, only about, I'll call it a quarter of that is actually replacement line. Others of them are new lines. And then as I proceeded to ask other questions, found out that the line's not really in the master plan. It's a design of an alternate for a master plan. And then the amount that's in our CIP budget this year is about 177,000, and we're adding a 1.5-plus contingency. So it's more of a, I don't have a problem with the project. I've gone over it with engineering. I'm satisfied that it's a good project, and I support the project, but it shows kind of a disconnect in our system. We don't have somebody that's kind of looking over the utility side, like I'll call it a utilities commission might look at, and going over these details. I'm a little disheartened that there's not more coordination between the public works and the engineering side and the operations and maintenance side as far as what's going on in the project and sign-off on the project. And it's, anyway, it's something I'd like to see that it doesn't get, the staff report wasn't written well, it brought up a lot of other questions, and then it's kind of shown the light on some of the utility coordination issues that, you know, we've got a master plan that was done in 1990. It was updated in 2008 with pricing. We've authorized the staff to go ahead and do a full-blown update, and they're in the process of doing that. So it's just one of those things that the council might want to consider in the future, some sort of a utilities commission where you might have a set of eyeballs that are concentrating on the details of this, because it's not really clear to us, and a lot of us don't have the expertise to get into this. So I don't know if staff, you've got anything to add, or if I've gotten something wrong.
No, I appreciate that, Councilman Piotr. And first of all, I apologize for the report. Our staff has always talked about Balboa Island as water main replacement program. It's in the master plan, and that title went through the report. This plan, as we looked at it, it made more sense to actually increase and put a new line segment in Balboa, so there is a substantial amount of new water main in here to satisfy some of the requirements for the master plan. We could have been a little more forthright in that. I do apologize for that. Sometimes we get a little, I guess, resting on it, because a lot of its technical details, and truthfully, a lot of councils in the past haven't wanted to talk about it. We're happy to talk about it, and we're actually excited. We were happy that Scott called us up and said, hey, let's talk about this. So we will do a better job in that. I will talk to my staff. Mark's here tonight. He'll be, this is something he'll be talking to his staff about and make sure we do a better job in that. I thank you for pointing that out. I do believe in the project we went through with Councilmember Piotr. I think it has merits to it. It does solve some fire flow and does help us with the master plan. We could have described it a little better, though, and I apologize for that.
And, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, and, Mr. Kiff, I think we've got, you know, the CIP showed 177,000. We're transferring 100, or 1.5, 1.7, and it's not really clear where that's coming from and where we're transferring it from, other than it is from the Water Capital Fund, and it's designated as part of that. the Water Capital Fund, and it's designated as part of that, so we're not borrowing it from another part of the general fund. But it's not really clear as far as how it fits into the overall budget or the CIP, at least this year's CIP. So, those kind of clarifications would also be helpful.
And again, as Mr. Webb stated, Mr. Piatek, I think those points are well-taken, and I think we need to be more clear about describing the source of funds and the fact that we're really just advancing a project from next year, but that certainly would have been clear to the reader, and we need to do a better job with that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All that being said, I'll move approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Seeing a request for comments from the dais on that motion. And second, are there public comments on this item? Seeing none, let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously, six-zero.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Are there any comments on non-agend items?
Yes, David Tanner. I wanted to comment, bring your attention to recent proposals by the state to amend the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines. These have just come out, one hundred and sixty-nine pages, to explain the changes, so they're not getting any simpler, they're getting much more difficult. I provided today some preliminary comments to staff, and I know staff is going to be reviewing these quite diligently and reporting to you. What I would like you to do is to consider these proposed amendments in combination with approximately twenty bills that the state has passed for accessory dwelling units and affordable housing. I reported to you at the general plan hearing, or status, that the state was taking discretionary approval away from local jurisdictions by saying, you can do this with this state bill, and it's allowed, it supersedes all local laws. They haven't said how effective these will be, and these are in perpetuity. So, I would ask that the council elevate this review of not only the SEQA guidelines, which expand exemptions for transportation-oriented facilities from SEQA, which is public comment and review, but a number of different types of projects are being exempted by these proposed guidelines. So, I'd like the city council to review these guidelines, because in my opinion, they're written hand-in-hand to support the state's agenda of infill and mask transit. It seems to be something that they want. So, I'd love to be wrong, and I'd love your staff to say I've misinterpreted these guidelines, but I don't believe I am. So, I request that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tanner. Next speaker, please. Seeing none, all reports from city council and committee activities. Mr. O'Neill?
None.
Mr. Piatek?
None.
Mrs. Dixon?
None.
Mr. Herman?
None.
Mr. Avery?
None.
Mayor, approach, Mr. Duffield?
I have none.
I have none as well. On to current business, staff.
Mr. Mayor, you have an option of a staff report on this one, if you'd like. It's short, but if you feel comfortable with the way the agenda report is written, that's your prerogative, too.
Any requests from the dais from a staff report? I see none, public comments on this item? No public comments. Back to dais. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Herman, second by Councilman Dixon.
Motion carries unanimously, seven-zero.
Madam Clerk?
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Any motions to reconsider? We need some court-ordered council meetings more often, some nice and quick. We are adjourned in memory of Gay Walsell Kelly.